Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. My name is William Lutz, President of Council. You are in council chambers. It is Monday, October 2nd at 7:00 p.m. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance given by Mr. Rozell. Please stand.
Thank you.
Oh God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now. You never leave us or forsake us. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of this city, in your own image with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for calling, for the calling you have bestowed upon each one of us to be good stewards of the public trust and for the opportunity you give us to come together to discuss the issues of importance to the city, to the Troy community. Be with us now and forever. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance is made by the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
This is Snee, here. Mr. Twiss?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Seabert?
Present.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Whitten?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, we'll move on to an introduction of the incoming members of the Mayor's Youth Council, Mayor Oda.
Um, Tim Davis is going to handle this for me. He's going to do the introductions. All the kids are going to come up to the front when Tim lets them, and they'll introduce themselves.
We'll just have them all come up together and stand in line from there, so organize chaos. If our mayor, member, or council member, please come to the back. Stand here, or face him over here. See if you can file all these questions. See if you organize it.
Emerson just moved towards that wall.
Yeah, I'm going to walk. I'm smashing down. I know where I stand, right?
Breaks, lean together a little bit.
So we're going to have them introduce themselves, start out here, or have them say their name, and what school you're representing.
Real loud.
My name is Rainne Muller, and I'm from Cookson.
My name is Evelyn Villacampi, and I'm from Scottsburg.
I am Sarah Gardner, and I'm from Forest Elementary.
My name is Amoye Fiona, I'm from Forest.
I'm Rosie, and I'm from Concord Elementary.
My name is AJ Wellbaum, I'm from Hades.
My name is Jada Fidino, and I'm from Hewitt.
My name is Lily Scutcher, and I'm from Cookson.
My name is Delilah Wilson, and I'm from Hook.
My name is Alex Webber, and I represent Hook Elementary.
My name is Julie White, I'm from our own school.
My name is Eleanor Anderson, and I'm from Miami Walter School.
My name is Fiona Mark, and I represent Troy Christian Schools.
My name is Lauren Flot, and I'm from Troy Christian.
My name is Emerson Gray, and I represent Concord Elementary.
My name is Juan Borja, and I represent Miami Walter.
I'll just move around and do a picture for Lawrence, and we don't have any favorite students, but I am a Hated Alumni, so.
No, you don't. All right. Super.
If we meet them out in the hallway, we'll just make our way out.
Beer presses are down the hall.
Say what?
Beer presses are down the hall. Give it a minute. They did points out pretty quick.
If I could. They might hurt me.
Now they're moving their shoes.
They're like church pews, you've got to have the same seat.
That's right.
You should just pull them out of your seat.
There you go. We'll start putting old reserve placards on them. For some churches, you buy your shoes. All right. And moving on to the summary of the minutes. Mrs. Knight, can you please read a summary of the last minutes of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, September 18, 2023. Committee reports. There was a committee report of the chair from the workshop of September 11, 2023, where it was indicated that council directed staff to continue with design budget and other work on a future roundabout. This would be at West Main Street, Stanfield Road, Experiment Farm Road, and there would be future legislation relating to the roundabout. There was no legislation following various comments. There was a presentation regarding the, from the citizens of the Troy Schools Committee regarding the Troy School levy that will be on the ballot, and then council adjourned at 7:31 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How's council issued the disposal of the minutes this evening?
Moved it from the second.
Has been moved or approved of the minutes by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seabert?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee? Yes. Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, we have three committee reports this evening. We'll begin with the Law and Ordinance Committee and Mrs. Snee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met September 25th to consider a moratorium on issuing of parking fines for certain time limit violations in the downtown historic district for the months of October, November, and December 2023. This will be in recognition of the coming holiday season of events and in recognition that there has been some impact to downtown businesses with recent road construction projects and road closures. The moratorium would not include violations associated with designated handicap or 30-minute spaces, parked vehicles overhanging the driving lane, or vehicles not parked within the white lines. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared establishing a moratorium on issuing parking fines for certain time limit violations in the downtown historic district for the months of October, November, and December 2023. This committee supports emergency legislation so that the moratorium could commence October 3rd, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Ms. Seabert, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Snee. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Seabert?
If you could bear with me for a minute, at all of the city, well, not, a majority of the outlying, at-large council meetings, people come up and ask us about emergency legislation, and why do we do emergency legislation? And I think tonight is a very good example of three, I know we've only heard one committee report, but you're going to hear two more that all have emergency legislation. So, under ordinary legislative function, if we pass something, it pins for 30 days and then would become law. For example, if that would happen on this as a non-emergency measure, it would not go into effect until the middle of November, end of November, which would severely impact what council's trying to do, which is open up the downtown area without fear of a parking ticket to encourage development because of, well, just encourage people downtown. So, and we're going to have two more that are time restrictive based upon a grant being, having a deadline of October 11th. I've confirmed with Ms. Reese, who's the Community Economic Development Director, that those grants weren't even put out until September 7th. So if we voted on those and waited 30 days, we would not meet the deadline for those sorts of grants. I'm not saying yea or nay on the particular pieces of legislation. I just think it's important to explain why sometimes things are done emergency, because we get asked that with some great frequency, and there, I can assure you, and I confirmed with Ms. Reese, they work dutifully and diligently to avoid council having emergency legislation. It's not something that council takes lightly or wants to have happen on a recurring basis. It generally happens in these types of situations where we need to get something done in a rapid fashion. As a statutory city, this is how we have to do it. So, I just wanted to clarify that because I think two weeks ago, Mr. Henderson, or I don't, it might, somebody brought it up, and I think it gets asked of, at least personally gets asked all the time, why do you guys do everything emergency? So, I wanted to explain that because we have three issues. So, thanks for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Seabert. Any other comments or questions on this report?
If I might dovetail on that one.
Mr. Phillips?
Sometimes that same item on an emergency basis is required by law or by Constitution. So, it's ODOT in particular, and some of our grant applications fall under the same guidelines, so that is in addition to the timeliness of some things. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Parks and Recreation Committee and Mr. Whitten.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on September 25th to consider authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to submit a Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, IAJA, grant application through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission to fund a portion of the cost of the Troy Downtown Riverfront Recreation Trail project, and to execute any related documents. The grant application will be for the amount of $750,000, approximately $260,000 of that amount will be used to fund the city's only obligation for the project for the paving of a new raised recreation trail to be installed along the south side of a portion of the river. Remaining funds from this grant will be used to offset the cost of the levee tow part of the recreation trail. The city is not committing any general fund resources to the levee tow portion of the project. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to submit a grant application for the federal IAJA funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission to fund a portion of the cost for the Troy Downtown Riverfront Recreation Trail project and to execute any related documents. Based on the application deadline of October 11th, this committee supports emergency legislation. That is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Schilling?
Yeah, I've read this report over, and I'd have Mr. Davis be able to help me with this from Mrs. Rhodes, but this thing runs from Crawford Street, you know, back to the Treasure Island. And my question is, is there any access points other than Treasure Island and Crawford Street? In other words, are there steps or handicap ramps going up to North Market Street? Or other, some other location that is closer to the downtown?
At this point, there is not. It is on our future plans to have that connected, but it is not part of this project or grant application. Our goal would be to have a direct connection into the downtown, maybe at a next phase later on with this.
So it just runs, I mean, it just zoos past the downtown and there's, I mean, you know, I mean, I just, I mean, if you're going to take a walk, you go across the river and use the other recreational trail. I mean, it's, I'm not sure what the, if we don't have access to the downtown, then why are we doing this at this particular point in time? In other words, why not develop some plans that would essentially, you know, provide access points to the downtown and then go after the grants to get a more complete plan? I don't understand why we're, and the other thing is, of course, we're at least two years out on this thing. I mean, the dam's not going to be built till '25, we're taking it out till '25, and of course, we're going to build another dam up by Treasure Island, so the ditch that, you know, goes around there, you know, that's going to supposedly still have some water in it.
Correct. So, what we've done with the timeframe is the next two years, should we even be funded for this project, we would be looking at grants to make those connection points. We talked about having no locally, no general fund dollars go towards this, and we intend to keep that that way. That's why we're applying for future grants for those connection points.
Are these grants available at any time? I mean, is this a one-shot deal, or do we, could we go to Miami Valley Planning next year and say, hey, we need, let's take a look at this grant thing now?
Since that would be a small amount of money, there's different paths that we can go through for different recreational uses. That's what we're eyeing right now, and a lot of those are open next year to be funded in 2026 as well, so hopefully we can pair them together. It's just not a part of this project at this grant at this time.
Okay. So, the goal is, several losses, why we're doing this now, I just, I don't.
So, several reasons. One, because it's in the pipeline, and if we can get, if we can get the $750,000, you're so far out, we were trying to time it all together with the low dam head removal. So, timing wise, it works out well, so you're in 2025, 2026. And then with this funds, we would be able to make this trail roughly the same time period. Other funds then would come and be, hopefully become available that we could get to tie them in. Our goal is to connect the east side through the downtown. Right now, there's no safe access point except for on streets. We would start with that, give them the safety connection point, and as I stated, we wanted to get other funds for those connection items.
Have we ever thought about, I mean, the MKSK study, you know, talk about Water Street, and we placed that bike lane in there on the south side of Water, of West Water Street? Have we ever thought about putting the bike lane on the north side of Water Street where there's no interconnection with cars? And using that as a, I mean, we're giving up some parking, but you could have a, have a bike lane along West Water Street that would essentially serve the same purpose. And all you have to do is pay for the paint.
Yeah. I know we tried it on the, on the south side.
Which was a mistake.
Yeah, it was not received well, and we did talk to property owners on the north side, and there's a lot more homes, so it affects their direct parking. Not everybody has a garage, so now you're taking away parking in front of their homes, which would not be very favorable. So that's why we did not attempt that. I think we do have some information in front of you that talks about the Riverfront Study and the future proposed plan that we're following, our comprehensive plan, because that was in the Downtown Riverfront Study of 2017. And this is just us making that, that into reality.
Okay. I'm done, I'm done right now. Thank you.
I just have two things, three things add to that, I guess. One is, you know, you got to go back, I said something earlier in the meeting, you got to love government work, but we started this in 2021 when we had a presentation about the Sciota Mile from ODNR, and showing how you had connectivity from Treasure Island through downtown and using that as a spur for economic development for the east side. And I agree with Mr. Schilling, and I think that you got to start somewhere. You got to put the initial, the initial deal in, and so I think there's a whole holistic plan that we've talked about. I spoke to Ms. Reese right before the meeting today to confirm that she felt we could get the $4 million sort of projected. I agree, there's no fixed numbers, but, and I don't want to, I can't see her face, but I think she'll confirm that, she told us today that she felt there was no, that she would be able to secure the funding for this holistic project absent any general fund monies, which, if you remember, in 2021, we put a specific ordinance that said we will not use general fund monies for that. So, I think there's maybe three council members that weren't even here at that time, maybe more, but 2021, we said there'll be none of those. So I think it's important to understand the holistic approach, what this is, why this came to, to being today. Second is, I think we need to, and I would ask, I don't know if this is appropriate, I was going to wait till then, but it seems more appropriate at this time, Mr. Lutz to schedule a meeting with council to get apprised as to the low dam project from Mr. Knight from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, just because it really is, council sits up here and we're always turning, and we're going to have a new council member in January, and we probably have new council members that didn't even see the presentation from 2021, and I think it's important that we continue to have dialogue so we can get input from the community, from the citizens, and from us as to what this plan is going to entail. And so I would ask that we do that as well. And there's a third thing, but it escapes me right now, so that were my questions.
I will add on to that because I think the low dam removal actually started in 2015, is when we first started having public hearings. So, to your point, it's been a long process, of course, COVID and everything else pushed it back, so it is a very long process, and this is just one piece of a larger pie that we're trying to put together. So we're doing it basically piece by piece because it's, it's actually like, you could consider it three projects into one, and this is the portion of this pie, then you have a pot over here, and then another pot over there. So it's, even we were talking about it at the staff level, the amount of grants that we're writing and we're going forward, because you can't use the same grant name, we had three different grant name projects for this. So it's a very large and cumbersome process. That's kind of why it's flowing the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments or questions from council members on this report? Seeing none, we're on the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. The committee members, Phillips and Snee, met on September 25th to consider authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to submit a Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, grant application through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission to fund a portion of the cost of the West Main Street, Experiment Farm Road, Stanfield Road Intersection Improvement Project, and to execute any related documents. At a workshop on September 11th, council directed staff to continue with design budget and other work on a future roundabout at this intersection to address improved flow of traffic. The current project estimate is $5 million, and the maximum grant award would not exceed 2.6 million, which is approximately 50% of the project estimate at the same, at the time of the grant application. If funded, the grant will be available in state fiscal year 2028, with construction extending into 2029. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to submit a grant application for federal IAJA funds through the MVRPC for the West Main Street, Experiment Farm Road, Stanfield Road Intersection Improvement Project, and to execute any related documents. Based on the application deadline of October 11th, committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we open it up for citizen comments for items on the agenda. Two resolutions and one ordinance for discussion this evening. If you wish to speak on any of those items, please come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address council. Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper.
Good evening. Wade Westfall, 305 West Water Street, Troy. I was asked for Mr. Howard Winger at 5:15 West Water Street. I believe all of you received this today. Good, so I'm not going to re-dire the record because it'll eat up more than two minutes. I would like to highlight the last statement he made. He would encourage rejected proposal for emergency procedures, securing funding for such an ill-defined project, take time to complete a comprehensive design with drawings to identify the full scope of the low-head dam removal and restructuring of the river. Once again, Mr. Winger, my wife and I were not opposed to the restoration of the river. We were not opposed necessarily to a bike path. There was issues of priority, but due to some research I did later on this afternoon with Miami Valley Region Planning, I do believe you could probably give this more than one reading. At any time, I believe that after one or two readings, you can still pass an emergency resolution, if I'm not, you know, if I'm correct. Some of the clarity involves, needs to be, is extremely pivotal to the tow path and the entire project from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the report that this council adopted. It never stated that the tow and the path was critical item for the improvement of the health of the river. So my question is, is the tow and path critical? And also, the report on rough estimates, regional rough estimates, the Oxbow Interconnect, the Troy Low Dam Removal, the Pickle Low Dam Removal, and the other inlet work in Pickle is going to take the majority of the $4 million fund that U.S. Fish and Wildlife was coming to the path, to the, to the table with. The tow and path is approximately $3 million, and of course, you know, you've got one of the best grant writers on the face here, back here, am I confident she can probably pull the other $3 million or $2.25 million expenditures with her talent, more than likely, but your comment, Mr. Schilling's comment about the, how it ties into Main Street or Market Street, I think all of those are critical to have. I did have one council member kind of tell me this week, thank you for all the work you did on it. Tim Davis, thank you for all this work that you guys have done in clarifying, trying to get this resolved for us, but I did have a council member saying this is kind of like getting a, buying a saddle.
It was, it's, we're going to buy a saddle and hope we get a horse for Christmas.
Horse for Christmas.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Westfall. Any other events?
Mr. President?
Oh.
Could I ask how we were delivered the correspondence from Mr. Winger that you referred to? Because I don't.
And there was copies up here for you. If you did not.
We should.
Every, every council member should have got one, you think? Or that yours.
I did not.
I don't think anybody got one.
I don't think so, but thank you.
You forward me the email, it's out there. There is copies, there are copies there.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure because I didn't get an email, and I'm not sure if anybody else said. Thank you.
Okay.
I have to make more copies, there's not enough correspondence. I can get them to you afterwards, is that all right?
Would council want this now, or would you?
No, I just want to get a copy. Okay, appreciate that.
Okay. We can wait till the end of the meeting. Please, name and address, you have two minutes.
Thank you, President. My name is Dan Foley. I'm the Director of the Great Miami Riverway with Miami Conservancy District, and I wanted to say thanks to Commissioner Westfall and also Mayor Oda last week for attending our 50th anniversary of the first mile of trail that was created here in Troy that's led to the nation's largest trail network, and I want to thank the city for your support of the, of the whole initiative. Given that, I'm here to just register a word of support on the grant application to MVRPC for the trail connection in downtown Myersburg. I was here in the chambers as a Montgomery Commissioner, Montgomery County Commissioner about 10 years ago when Treasure Island was discussed, and Mayor Bemish invited members, elected officials up and down the corridor to come, and I remember that, and I drove here tonight because I think that when we see investment like Treasure Island, it gives confidence to other communities to do the same thing, and I believe that the bike path connectivity that you will see, or that you're trying to get through MVRPC will also kind of engender confidence in, not only giving people more places to be on the river for health reasons, but I think the thing that we see with public investment, whether it's Treasure Island, whether it's the Montgomery County Fairgrounds redevelopment in Dayton, whether it's Myersburg, building a $5.7 million park in Myersburg, is private investment follows public investment on many, many occasions. And because we have such a proud legacy of building trails in this region, I think one of the things we could serve ourselves well to do besides the big system is create more of those arteries in our, in our internal cities, whether it's State and Troy, Tip City, or all of our Riverway cities. So I just want to, I just want to say from the Riverway standpoint, we would, we would ask, we hope that the council decides to try to ascertain that money and get that money because we think it's going to make the whole Riverway corridor stronger. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other events? Wish to come forward.
Susan Westfall, 305 Water Street. I just wanted to read one paragraph from Howard Winger's letter, and I know you guys will get a chance to read that later. And under his point number two, he asked, "Who is pushing the construction of a bike spur from somewhere east of the railroad trestle direct to Treasure Island? I heard nothing about the bike spur, including any access to the downtown area," which was your point, Mr. Schilling. "I do not understand how the new path creates a link to the downtown area without having at least one stairway from the street level to the bike path. I heard several people state that the east side of Troy currently does not have a safe way of accessing the bike path. I disagree with this, and I do also." "There is a safe way of accessing the bike path, leading from the southeast side of downtown to the main north-south bike path at the Conagra Facility on Dyne Mill Road. Once on the main bike path, a rider can ride north, accessing Miami Shore's Golf Porse, the City Pool, Treasure Island, Duke Park, and beyond, and ride south to Tip City and beyond. Why the need for a third bike path along the river? Nothing against people living on the east side of Troy, but why is it necessary to provide a redundant method of accessing the bike path system when people living in the Concord area and Kings Chapel have no safe, road-free option to get to the bike path system?" And as a member of the park board, this really has not even come before us, and I know it will be a park board. will be a park board priority to maintain this path. As a member for the past several years, there are many priorities that have been pushed down the road. The park office has been pushed down because of funding issues. I know we need bathrooms at Duke Park close to the football fields and the soccer fields. I would love to see something done at the skate park. We just have a lot of priorities that have not been, well, I guess things haven't been prioritized. We have other things. This is leading to someplace we already have access to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Westfall. Anyone else wish to address council on our agenda items this evening? Seeing none, we move right into resolutions. I want to ask Mrs. Knight to read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R49, 2023.
Resolution number R49, 2023. A resolution authorizing the submittal of applications for federal IIJA funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the West Main Street Experiment Farm Road-Stanfield Road Intersection Improvement Project and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading, there's an application deadline of October 11.
It's been moved to suspend the three readings, Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended, has been moved without the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R50, 2023.
Resolution number R50, 2023. A resolution authorizing the submittal of the application for federal IIJA funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the Troy Downtown Riverfront Recreational Trail Project and declaring an emergency. This also has an application deadline of October 11, first reading.
It's been moved, it's been suspended, the three reading, by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended, has been moved without the resolution by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the only ordinance of the evening, ordinance 04, 046, 2023, excuse me.
Ordinance number 046, 2023. An ordinance declaring a moratorium on the enforcement of Section 351.15, the enforcement of prohibitions against the parking of motor vehicles for periods of less than two hours, Section 353.12, and Section 351.03N of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This will set a moratorium on the issuance of such citations starting tomorrow through the end of December, first reading.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading, by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
It's been moved without the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
It's been moved without the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to comments of officials, Mayor Oda.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I was wondering when trick-or-treat is.
October 20 is Thursday, October 26, the fourth Thursday of October from...
Six to 8:00 p.m., period. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Well, I have to do that one more time this year. Moving on, any council members have any comments this evening?
Yeah, two quick.
Mr. Rozell?
Two quick thank yous. Thank you to Sue and Police Department, whoever put the signs out, for the funeral at the Methodist Church this morning, worked well, and thank you for Street Department or whoever responded to the dead possum on South Dorset and got it cleaned up rather quickly last Thursday or Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Snee?
I just want to say a thank you to Mayor Oda, to Mr. and Mrs. Davis, and Mr. and Mrs. Kerber for working with the mayor's youth council as a fifth grade teacher and seeing those students year after year go through that program. I really appreciate the work and time you put into that, thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Mr. Severt?
Mr. Rozell, did they assure that the possum wasn't just playing possum and was actually diseased on the road?
They kinda, the person that called kinda said they'd watched them pick it up and had a little hard time picking it up.
Okay. Any other council, Mr. Schelling?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mrs. Westfall for speaking tonight, and I'd also like, as a member of the park board and recreation committee, to hear from them as far as their wish list, because I don't think we've gotten too much communication on that. As we're going, as we're in the, starting the budgetary process now, I think it'd be important for council to hear from them to, you know, possibly see what is available and what some things we could maybe get done in the very near term on some of the things that the park board feels that's very important. And so again, I'd like to thank her for talking about that, and I'd like to hear from them in some form of communication and let us know what you guys, you know, give us an idea of what you need and what you want. Thank you so much.
Mayor Oda?
Park board meets on a regular basis, those meetings are videotaped and available on YouTube and...
Yes, we don't allow public comment.
Well, you can always send an email.
All I'm asking for is to send us a list of things that they want, okay? I don't think, it shouldn't be a big deal.
But the...
Okay? It shouldn't be a big deal.
It's not a big deal.
Then don't make it one. Any other council members have any comments this evening? Do any staff members have any comments this evening? Do any members of the audience have any comments this evening? You are invited to come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
I'm Hallwick, I live at 1262 West Main Street. It's pretty dark over there now, with Phase 2 not getting done for, I don't know, 2028 at this point. They already disconnected all the streetlights, and now it is 1939, dusk was at 1919 tonight, and it's gonna be a darker center. Nobody walks down Main Street in reflective material. We got semis rolling down that place, 40, 50 miles an hour. Nothing against the Troy police, they do a great job, but it's just causing an unsafe spot in Troy, and this is our main street. It's where we're trying to make it to be the nicest place, that I walk all the street, I'm all for that. My kids can't even walk down the street because I walk too close to the street. I'm completely for all this construction. But now, they have disconnected the streetlights for at least two months now, and I have no